Hello, welcome everybody to the special town council meeting study session, December 14th, 223, and the time is 4:03. Can we get a row call please?
Councilmember Leva.
Here.
Councilmember Greer.
Here.
Councilmember Dickinson.
Here.
Councilmember Heberly.
Here.
Councilmember Schumacher.
President.
Vice Mayor Hunt.
Here.
Mayor Palguda. We have a quorum.
Thank you. So, we're going to start with item number two, discussion items, two A Vision 2024, consideration, possible action, and we have Skylar Barton here with us. And Skylar is our fairly new assistant to the town manager, and we're glad you're here, Skylar.
Excited to be here. Vice Mayor, Council, we are excited to present to you our second iteration of the strategic plan, Vision 2024. We are proud of this plan. We feel like we've built consensus throughout the organization at every level to build this plan, and we feel like it reflects council priorities. In August of 2021, council met to discuss strategic priorities and objectives and key focus areas for the town. In October of 2021, the council developed that plan and adopted and approved Prescott Valley's first strategic plan. And that strategic plan has served as a foundation and a stepping stone to building and developing this second iteration, Vision 2024. So this is Vision 2024. This is our strategic plan. The development for this plan started off with staff surveys, and then we had our strategic planning session with the council on October 26th. And then the plan went back to department heads for further review to create quantifiable and measurable goals that would stretch the organization. We also developed a new mission statement, which you can see in the top right-hand corner. This mission statement was voted on by over 70% of our staff to give us this purpose that most of the staff identifies with. It says, "Deliver exceptional service to enhance our quality of life." Now, this mission statement has everything you want in a mission statement. It says what we do, how we do it, and why we do it, and it is clear and concise so that any staff member could be able to remember our purpose at any given time. If you look at the bottom of the page, you'll see our values, and they are sequential in order if you read left from right. So it starts with service. As you look back at our mission statement, that's what it's all about. It's about serving. That's why we're here. That's why we do what we do. We are public servants. And that leads to having integrity, being accountable and transparent, and doing what we do with honesty. And doing what we do with respect and having kindness for others, which engenders collaboration, both internally and externally, so that people want to work together. And it creates fun. It creates innovation, collaboration, and a comfortable work environment. So those have not changed. In the middle of the document, you'll see four different banners. Each of those represent a key focus area, and we will go over those. So first is high-performing team, which is how we conduct our business and ourselves through our culture, diversity, communication, delivery, outreach, processes, and values, what we do, how we do it, and who we do it for. And there are three priorities within this area: employee engagement, professional development. This is a new one, communications. It says, "Develop and implement an internal and external comprehensive multi-platform communications and branding strategy within one year." And each of these areas have multiple priorities. This focus area has changed from the previous strategic plan. It was water stewardship. It is now water and land stewardship because we added that last priority area, land conservation. That objective reads, "Within four years, identify and develop a regional system of connecting wildlife corridors that protects biodiversity while safeguarding watershed and ecosystem health." There are also three other priorities within this area: water recharge, stormwater management, and reducing overdraft. Our third focus area is quality of life. That is enhancing the health of neighborhoods by promoting well-being for all through safety, infrastructure, housing, connectivity, recreational space, and community engagement. This has five priority areas: capital improvement, pathway and trail connectivity, attainable housing, citizen satisfaction, and public safety. And our last focus area is prosperous community. It is creating an environment where our residents can thrive for a lifetime via job opportunities through diversified and growing economy. It has three priority areas: industry diversification, business attraction and expansion, and financial sustainability. So again, we feel like this plan is comprehensive. It reflects council priorities, and we are proud of what has come out of our strategic planning sessions. The next steps for this plan is we have assigned leads and co-leads to each objective, and they will see through. They'll develop committees, and we will have reoccurring meetings to make sure that these objectives are on track and that we are ensuring they are completed. So with that, I will take any questions.
Skylar, can you go back to the page with the banner, the banners? So I told Gilbert this, but I want to tell you too, because I know you're the author of this page. But this page is a perfect snapshot of Prescott Valley, and so I appreciate your work on this. Thank you. Other comments, Council?
Job well done.
Yeah. Comments? Nope. Okay, then. Thank you very much. So we are going to move on to two... to be master drainage plans, phases one and two, discussion only. Ms. Ruder.
Good evening, Vice Mayor, Council members. We are very excited. West Consultant Group and town staff have worked tirelessly to get Phase One completed for the update to the master drainage study. And so this evening, what we'd like to discuss with you is what it took to get through Phase One, what were the results of the Phase One, and how we move forward into Phase Two of this update to the master drainage plan. And with me tonight, I have Michael Gerlock with West Consultants, who has done a majority of the work. So, Michael.
Welcome, sir.
Thank you. Thank you, Vice Mayor and Council. I appreciate the opportunity to be here today to talk about our progress and status, the results of Phase One, and how we're going to move forward. Some of this information you've seen before, so I'll try to keep it high-level in that area and move through quickly, just to make sure you have the context of some of the more recent work that we've been doing. So I have a basic agenda here for the information. We're going to talk about the baseline data that we used in the study, how we identified problem areas, and assessed a ranking of those problem areas, how we've approached formulating alternatives to those problem areas, and then lastly, what our Phase Two goals will be. So first, and I'm going to go through this quickly, as an engineer, I'm focused on numbers, so apologize for that in advance, but the numbers are important for you to understand what's going on. So the study area that we looked at is approximately 160 square miles, excuse me, in size, and we broke it up into two different levels of detail, which was appropriate for the community at large. We have a detailed area which encompasses the corporate limits, and then that area was approached using a very high-level modeling technique, which is considered basically at this point in time, the state-of-the-art of engineering. And then for the outlying areas, which are mostly undeveloped, we used a lower detailed level of information. We collected a great deal of information, elevation information, the types of land use that occur, what soils are present, how much rainfall occurs, and other information like that. We used the most recent detailed topographic mapping that's available. It's provided by the USGS, and we received some of that directly from the town, the USGS, and the county. So we appreciate the support from the county. We used existing published data to understand the types of soil conditions that are present in the watershed and how that affects runoff. We put a large effort into categorizing the land use that's present in the watershed. This is an essential component to our modeling, and we have a highly detailed land use coverage of the corporate limits. It includes all the standard land use categories that are provided for in your general plan, and it also accounts for the presence of more than 20,000 building footprints that occur within the community. So a tremendous amount of detail. And by the way, your staff helped us prepare some of that information. Essential to water moving through the watershed is the presence of hydraulic structures and how you account for that in the modeling. So we have looked at more than 400 culverts that control the direction of water through the watershed, and we've collected data that's needed in order to evaluate how that operates. With all that, we've developed runoff for the watershed, so we've quantified in great detail the magnitudes of runoff, both in terms of the peak discharge and the runoff volume for the entire watershed, but more explicitly for the corporate limits. And you can see example of those results here, where we can provide town staff peak discharge and runoff volumes anywhere in the watershed to a high degree of detail. This is more information, by the way, than the town has ever had at their disposal, and we've already been able to put that to work in supporting ongoing development projects. The results, there's varied results, so these are just snapshots of what that looks like. So we also can compute velocity anywhere in the watershed, which is important for understanding the types of protection that you may need from runoff magnitudes that you see from design events. Here's another example of the peak discharge results that you can see from our modeling. I'm sure, this is a video. We'll see if this works. I'm going to click the button and hope that it works. It does. Look at this. So this is, just to give you a sense of how it operates, the water will fall over, rainfall will fall over the watershed. It will begin to collect, concentrate, and then move downstream, directed by the topography, hydraulic structures, and land use. And so what you're looking at here is the flow depth with time from one of our simulations that we completed. The colors represent the magnitude of the depth, so the lighter blue colors are very, very shallow depths. The darker purplish colors are deeper depths. And by the way, what you're seeing, I'm not sure if the laser pointer works. It does. So Robert Road is right here, and you're seeing the water collect off the watershed. So let's see if we can restart it. You'll see the water collect off the watershed, begin to concentrate in the wash. Eventually, it flows along Robert Road down, and then eventually towards the Algarve Free River. And this data is readily available from the results that we produce. It's important every time we do these types of studies, not only to put forth the best information that's available, but also to confirm that what we are using and what we produced meet what is expected for this area. And there are a number of available tools to help us do that. This is a critical component, because as a general rule in Arizona, we don't have a lot of data to calibrate our model. So we're relying on engineering judgment in a lot of cases in how well our results replicate the physical processes. So this is just an example of how we can confirm the appropriateness of our results by measuring or comparing the output from our models to other data. It's called an indirect method of verification. And the dots that you see represent our model results, and they should more or less fit this central line here. And you'll note that we are fitting quite well. In fact, surprisingly well. And I think the conclusion here is that we have great confidence that our model results are reasonable, the data that we used is appropriate, and that it should be, you should have confidence in using it moving forward with future projects. So that's some information that you've seen for the most part. Now I want to get to what we did with that information to help us identify existing drainage problems and other opportunities that kind of fit actually quite nicely with the 2024 vision. So from a safety perspective, we focused on three factors. This is public safety. We looked at where you're experiencing flooding in residential structures or other commercial buildings, and this was derived through our work plus drainage complaints that the town provided us. We also looked at risks for pedestrians and vehicles that may be navigating streets and sidewalks either during or immediately after a runoff event, and then also what hazards might be present due to erosion. There's a lot of information here, and I'm going to keep this relatively high-level. But to give you a flavor of what we did, we considered four different classifications of each of those safety factors that range from a low risk of occurrence or probability to an extreme risk. And those are color-coded, and we've developed numeric guides for measuring that, and that's present here. By way of example, from a structure flooding perspective, so water that may impact a residential structure, for example, if the depth of flow adjacent to that structure is somewhere between a quarter foot to a half a foot, then we would consider the risk of flooding to that structure to be low. The reason for that is most standard finished floor elevations are approximately six inches above the adjacent ground. And so we feel relatively confident that if our model is producing depths below that range, while there may be water present near the structure, we don't feel that the risk is sufficiently high to warrant concerns with water getting in the structure. So that's the basis of that criteria. And then it ranges from there. So as the depth increases, obviously, the risk to the structure increases. So what does that look like? So we've computed these factors for all 20-some-odd-thousand structures in the community, and we've color-coded those for clarity, and you can see here how that works out. On the whole, it's provided here, but this again is Robert Road. So from the 100-year runoff event, these structures here have flow depths approaching three feet that may be in the immediate vicinity of that structure. So we would assume that the risk of flooding is very high and likely could result in damage to that structure, probably not catastrophic damage, but significant damage. So this is the criteria that we've established and we've mapped for the entire community. We've done the same thing from a perspective of vehicle and pedestrian safety in the community, and we're using standard, these are federal guidelines to aid us in quantifying these hazards. So in a similar fashion, when the depth and velocity of water from a 100-year rainfall event works out to a value less than .75, and there's some math going on back there, then this is a relatively safe condition. The velocity would be relatively low, or the depth is relatively shallow, and all people, children to adults of all ages, can generally safely navigate that condition, and it's safe for vehicles. Moving up through the scale to extreme, when you have a value of the depth and velocity that results in a value of two, then what you would say is either the depth or the velocity is too great for any person to navigate safely, and vehicles would not be able to enter that without being swept away. So using our results again, we've quantified areas where this would occur. So you'll see in the overall image, a lot of red. These are concentrated in the washes, exactly where you'd expect this case to be, but there's other areas where you're seeing some conditions along existing roads. Here's Cattle Track and Roundup Drive, which is coming off of Viewpoint there. You can see Viewpoint is unhighlighted, unshaded, which means that is for the 100-year event, the conditions are safe, so it meets normal design standards. But once you get up to Roundup Drive, the culvert there, which is illustrated by these lines, there's existing culverts here and here, the capacity is insufficient to convey the flow without overtopping the road and presenting a hazard for pedestrians and vehicles. And then finally, we looked at the erosion that could occur during an event. This is a little bit more subjective. We did use some published standards for this, but this is more of a rule-of-thum approach for coming up with these criteria. So what we're assuming is that if the erosion depth during a rainfall event, you get scour of the land surface, if that depth is less than one feet, that would be considered normal riverine-type processes. Rivers are aggrading and degrading all the time. That's natural processes. So if you're in that one-foot margin, you're probably within normal morphological, to use a technical term, conditions. As the depth of scour increases, then you're going to start jeopardizing infrastructure, which could be buried utilities or drainage structures like culverts that may not be buried below that scour depth or have protective measures to withstand scour depths that exceed three or five feet. In these cases, we've identified those conditions with the darker colors. So again, looking at the watershed as a whole, you can see unsurprisingly that the major washes are exhibiting the more, the greater scour depths. This would be expected. Elsewhere within the watershed, the velocities and the depths that drive scour are not as concentrated, and so the scour depths are less. Once you get into the Algarve Free River, where the water is moving very quickly, very concentrated, and so this location here, Bradshaw Mountain Road, which is, the actual location is being hidden in the overall map, but you can see the scour depths along the Algarve Free River in this location are quite deep, which we would expect, and therefore there could be some areas to monitor, particularly for the bridge or other infrastructure like that due to those kinds of scour depths. So looking at all of those factors, we used some metrics to quantify the magnitude of those and began to discern patterns in the watershed where we were seeing problems develop during the 100-year event, which is our criteria that we used. And we started to map those areas out where we were seeing combinations of structure flooding with erosion or pedestrian or vehicle safety issues, and we mapped out approximately 100 locations within the total study area where the criteria indicated that there could be a potential problem. Once we had those mapped areas, we wanted to assess the severity of each one so that we could rank them and determine what areas might need to be addressed sooner compared to others, which again is correlating nicely with the 2024 vision plan. In order to do that, we developed a weighting system that considered each of the hazard classifications and some additional factors to begin to assign a qualitative number that represented the severity of each problem area so that we could compare one problem area to the next. This is a numeric value that was obtained, and once we had that value, we communicated with town staff to begin to sort of sort those values out into a top-10 list. So locations that we felt were the top-10 issues to address. That required some back and forth with town staff to make sure that we were capturing all the factors going on, existing plans that we may or may not have been aware of, or other elements that, from a purely engineering perspective, we weren't necessarily focusing on. With that ranking, we were illustrating the top-10 locations that you can see here out of all of the locations. Unsurprisingly, perhaps, the majority of the problem areas are in the older section of town, where the drainage infrastructure is not as robust as some of the newer sections of town that were following more current standards and practices. That doesn't mean that this top-10 list is all that would be done, or even the order necessarily that it would be done in. It's simply an assessment of what the top-10 may be. The top-10, or any list, is always going to be a function of the available budget at the moment or other factors, and it's just a guide to help the town sort of focus in on where they can set their priorities. With the assessment of ranked problem areas, we were then able to shift gears and now move into what kinds of solutions could be used to mitigate those problems. So there's sort of two classes of problems. There's standard engineering measures. These would be storm drains and channels and basins and things that you see already all throughout town. Those are always important considerations to have in your arsenal of mitigation measures, but there's a different class- But there's a different classification of methods that speak more directly to some of the other aspects of the town vision, which are the quality aspects, where you can promote greater quality through treating runoff as a resource and using that to achieve certain goals. And these can be sort of categorized into green infrastructure techniques. And there's a number of these techniques. And we feel that there is a strong desire to have green infrastructure techniques as part of your arsenal to solve drainage problems. And so we have adopted that in our process. An example of what that might look like, and I can envision this in many locations in town, is where you use the right-of-way, the street right-of-way that you have, and convert the unpaved portion of your street right-of-way into these cascading series of small detention basins. They're very small on the whole, or individually, they have very little impact. But collectively, over multiple streets, they begin to provide a meaningful impact for runoff mitigation. And so we envision this as one of the many things that we could provide in terms of solutions for the town. Some typical details of what that might look like, some examples of how you could use that. We're leaning on our experience in the town of Tucson, where we've implemented these methods and have authored some drainage standards already to address, to use these methods in Tucson. This is probably my favorite image. This is a section of Tucson that was experiencing some flooding. And this is what it looked like before. And this is what it looked like after we implemented some of these techniques. So not only does it begin to solve some drainage issues, but it really changes the landscape and character. And there is measures of what that does for your residents' outlook on things. It's quite remarkable. So what would that look like here in Prescott? And you'll have to forgive some engineering artistic work here, but I think you'll get the point. So looking at the right-of-way corridor, which as a general rule is considered from the pavement on these individual driveways. So the right-of-ways from here to here, you can begin to install in this open area, which is often occupied by a series of small roadside ditches, which are highly varied as you move through and inconsistent in their capacity. And you could turn it into a much more unified, managed, and attractive feature that also solves drainage problems. And there's a whole slew of green infrastructure techniques and purposes and benefits that I can go into. But essentially, a key to implementing these things, this is something I want to focus on, is to get the public aware of the value that this provides. And we can do this through demonstration projects. And we've been working with town staff to identify potential demonstration projects that can get the community excited about this technique and educate them on that to help everyone get on board. And there's a lot of science behind this, too. It's not just something that somebody has concocted as a good idea. There's actual known science behind the benefits of doing these techniques. And in addition to the green infrastructure techniques that we have implemented in the past, there's some new technology out there. It's a device, it's called an EGRP. It's essentially a, I'll liken it to a giant straw that works in reverse. So it takes water that is collecting on the surface, and it helps infiltrate it into the ground and spread it out more quickly than the soil would do on its own. And this is an enhancement to the infiltration that can also support recharge. And we've in fact implemented this in other areas. And so this is just an illustration that not only does the technology exist, we know how to use it and have used it successfully. You can incorporate these in the green infrastructure basins. So I showed this very quickly, I showed this detail previously. What you would do is you'd install these devices. The depths would be set to penetrate into the soil to the depth needed to get water into the ground. And so you combine these features to begin to really enhance the functionality. There are some other techniques which could be considered. In certain situations, this would be permeable pavement. There's a number of techniques that are done. We have some familiarity with permeable pavers, and there is a good application for those in certain locations. It's not applicable everywhere, but it's definitely one of the tools that we would consider in our arsenal. And again, with the EGRP devices, those straws, they can also work in conjunction with these components. So how might that work in some of the areas that we've identified as a problem area within your community? So this is again Roger Road right here. So the yellow boundary is the unique watershed that is contributing runoff to this particular area. And what I've highlighted is a zone right here. And what I can envision is you would install these roadside basins along these roadways here. They would collect runoff, they would infiltrate as much of that runoff as they could achieve. And then you could install a storm drain to handle the rest of the water that isn't captured by these, excuse me, these basins. And that will, so your underground infrastructure, which is the costly part, will not need to be as large as it would otherwise. So it's a cost savings measure, and the basins would be an enhancement as well as a functional component of the system. Continuing down the watershed, now that you've alleviated some of the runoff from the upper portion, the storm drain can begin to work as it's intended. And then along the way, there are smaller, currently town-owned parcels that could be used for small detention basins that could double as a recharge basin. So you're getting multiple goals out of these types of alternatives. Continuing along the way, there's another opportunity for a detention basin or recharge facility. And these could be envisioned like an urban park-type, little micro park where you could have some small retaining walls, some vegetation, a place to go walk your dog or experience just, you know, a small quiet space. And then also, they would function as a stormwater feature. And eventually, along Roger Road, you would get to Long Mesa Drive. And then there would be an open channel that would convey the remaining water to the Algaferia River. So this is an example of how combining traditional engineering infrastructure, which isn't always desirous, but needed, with green infrastructure to achieve the goals. So that's where we're at from the Phase One perspective. And we're ready to move on to the Phase Two goals. And what that will entail is first enhancing the existing drainage standards and policies of the town to incorporate green infrastructure techniques. So in order to get that implemented into the town, it needs to be part of your standards. That's step number one. So we would begin to work on that. We would look at enhancing all of the drainage standards to bring them up to date, to be current with the state of the technology, and then include green infrastructure tools and techniques and provide guides on how to implement those properly in the watershed. Once we have those, we can also start to begin combining other opportunities, not just pure drainage safety perspectives, but a broader look at multiple use opportunities, where we can combine recharge, which is again commensurate with your vision with drainage infrastructure, to have a fully functional, multifaceted drainage plan for the town. And this will potentially include implementation of pilot studies or demonstration projects to illustrate the benefits to your community. And with that...
Thank you, sir. Questions for our guests here, April?
So with your pilot projects and your demonstration projects, is part of that going to be actually measuring recharge? Or is it just showing like that, the potential for recharge? You know what I'm saying?
Yeah, that's a good question. Measuring recharge is something that occurs over a fairly long period of time. So I would offer that there is a potential to measure recharge over time. But the initial benefit of the demonstration projects would be more illustrative as to how you can combine these tools to solve multiple problems.
Vice Mayor, if I could add on to that, too. And I appreciate the Councilwoman Hepplely's question because what we saw there, and correct me if I'm wrong, is you've got kind of neighborhood-scale solutions. So it's improvements to the aesthetics of a neighborhood and drainage function. But I think where we're going to have greater opportunity for some pilot recharge projects will be in some larger basin areas. And we've identified several of them around the town where we have the potential of solving some larger drainage issues. And it has larger volumes of water that would help to, exactly to that point of being able to have the volume for the recharge. And then we've started a conversation with the state, because that's going to be the other key part of this, is if we can get the state to be engaged with us with the pilot project of recognizing that we are putting water back into the aquifer using our, you know, surplus storm runoff and actually get credit for it of putting water back into the aquifer. That's the ultimate goal. So I think there's going to be neighborhood-scale projects that are going to make huge improvements over time and throughout our community. But there's also going to be some key areas where I think we can have some exciting recharge projects that could really be a signature thing, working with the state. We'll have to bring many different partners to the table on it. There's a lot of questions of downstream water rights that we'll have to work through. But I think all of those are things that I think we can unravel and begin to kind of create a game plan on.
Questions?
Well, a quick comment. Is there a possibility with this green infrastructure mitigation project that the community could get involved? Because I know there's always, you know, a big discussion, you know, for water and concerns for water. And so I think that if an initiative could be, I don't know, proposed for the community to participate in something like this at a certain scale, I think that could be very, very positive, especially for how the neighborhoods are going to look, you know, and stuff like that.
It'd be fun if an Eagle Scout wanted to take on something like this, you know, a section or something, demonstration project.
Yeah, so as a scouter, I gravitate towards that quite nicely. And I think the idea is to develop good energy with the community because they will be key in implementing this. There needs to be the public acceptance to come into your street and do these sorts of things in what they may perceive as their property, even though it's within the town right-of-way. And the other part of that is maintenance, you know, to get people behind it. If they understand the importance of it and what it can do for themselves and their neighbors, it's more likely to be maintained in the manner that it was designed to function at. And so I think having public acceptance and excitement, in fact, is critical to the success. And it's important that they understand how it works. And then hence the pilot or the demonstration projects, is it educates them on all of those aspects. And so it's all tied together in that way.
Very good. Let me see if I have more questions.
I just have a comment. I can see that this would be, as you indicated, a discussion would need to be held with the residents as far as the areas where this would be improved because they do consider it, you know, part of their property. They pave it, they've got beautiful driveways. And but in general, however, the stormwater has caused some serious erosion in some areas. And some of the yards, especially in the central part of town, both the front and the back are in serious disrepair. And without a great amount of investment, it would be at this point in time. It's, to continue on without doing something would cause some major problems in our town. And so I do see the benefit of this. It would have to be obviously a lot of public input, as was suggested. And, but can you start on my street by any chance?
Well, and thank you for that input, and I concur. And I feel that what you've just concluded with likely echoes what we're anticipating hearing, is we see this done over here, could we do this over here in our street, too, even if it's not necessarily identified as a problem area because of the additional enhancements that it provides? So thank you for your comment.
So just to wrap up, I have a comment. Can you take us back to the slide that has the homes in the red area?
Yes. On Roger Road or overall? I say Roger, don't I? It's Robert, yes. I have been saying that all along.
We were smiling inside.
Almost, there we go.
So this is probably reflected on the FEMA maps as well in their extreme or high area, correct?
So I would say indirectly, it could be reflected on FEMA maps. Off the top of my head, I'm not sure that Robert Road is mapped in the FEMA floodplain. FEMA floodplains that are in the community, if I remember correctly, are Lake Shore, Luce, and there's one other. But to your point, if it were mapped in the FEMA floodplain, it would reflect something very similar to this.
And so then do we package this up and send it to FEMA to get our maps revised eventually? Is that what we do with this?
I thought we wanted community buy-in.
So that's a question I don't know that I am, I could answer on behalf of the town. I might venture that you would consider implementing some of the improvements first. If you were to proceed with floodplain mapping, for example, and these areas that are currently unmapped were to be mapped into the floodplain, then there would be your... a requirement for flood insurance.
Right.
Which would be, obviously, insurance is a benefit, but there's a cost associated with that as well.
But then I suppose the benefit of this study is that we have a lot more information when a developer comes in, and so they're not going to have to do this work as much as they would have maybe in the past on drainage studies.
Yes, that is most definitely the case. The town staff at this point has a tremendous amount of information that wasn't available to them before, and they were reliant on developers. Now, with this information, it's sort of flipped, where the town is providing information to the developers to use, and there's a different position of leverage here, where the town can work more closely with the developers to use this information to affect the policies and standards that you have. And in fact, that's ongoing, as I mentioned. I've provided information already to two projects that are currently in the works to aid in their designs.
And how quick will Phase 2 be done?
Well, I turn that over to the expert.
Thank you, Michael. So we're going to come back in January with the scope of work and fee for approval by mayor and council, first meeting in January, and that's going to be a nine-to-12-month process.
Great. Thank you, and thank you for your staff's work on this as well.
Thank you.
Okay, are you done with us, sir?
Any other questions for Michael before he runs out?
No, I think we're good.
Thank you. So we're going to move on to 2C, which is Robert Road rejuvenation and pavement marking, CIP number ST2402, and this is Ms. Ruder.
Good evening again, Vice Mayor, council members. I just wanted to give you a little background. So in 2021, oh, here's the clicker, in 2021, staff was looking at installing a crossing at Robert Road and NACE. And quickly, through staff information and through, we hired lead consultant engineers to look at this, we discover that, wow, we may want to look at the whole two miles of Robert Road that's currently four-lane between SR69 and Tranquil. And so that's just a little bit of the background. From that crosswalk study, what was found was crash history data, and I just wanted to share that with you, and it's not on the slide, but in the five-year period that the available crash data was available between 2016 and 2020, in this two-mile segment of Robert Road, there was 171 crashes, 59 of them rear-end, and 13 same-direction side-swipe. And that is simply because the current layout is two lanes in each direction with no turn lanes. And so what this multimodal project proposes is that we actually reduce down to one lane in each direction with a paved shoulder, multi, or two-way left-turn lane in the center, and a designated left-turn lane at the intersection, signalized intersections. Through this study, the level of service for the roadway is currently a Level of Service B. After we implement this project, it will continue to be a Level of Service B. So the capacity, even though we are restricting it to one lane, is not reducing the level of service for this roadway, because our 2022 traffic counts show that we only have between 5,000 and 10,000 vehicles, average vehicles, per day on this roadway. So with that being said, here's an overview of the, forgive my scribbling on this map. So here's an overview of the project limits. We are going to start at SR69. We will make sure we coordinate with ADA, because we will be impacting them with traffic control and things of that nature. The goal is to do this at night, so we don't impact traffic too often. We will completely do a micro-seal over the entire roadway, which will cover up all of the current pavement markings. If there's thermoplastic pavement markings out there, we will grind those out or water remove them prior to doing the overlay, and then we will come back in and survey the new striping, and then install the striping. With this, there will be some modifications to the mast arms and the signal heads as well, to make sure that they line up correctly over the lanes. And then we'll have a five-foot paved shoulder on each side, as well as the sidewalks. So if you look on the left, this is what Robert Road currently looks like. On the right is what it's going to look like afterwards. So you'll see the paved shoulder, the two-way left-turn lane, and one lane in each direction north-south. Again, at the signalized intersections, we'll have a dedicated left-turn lane. So here, the plans are about 90% complete at this time. The engineering team is looking over those, reviewing them, and making sure we haven't missed anything before we put this project out to bid in the spring, and we'll hopefully have it completed no later than June 30th of this next year. And so this is the intersection of Florentine and Robert Road, so you'll see that there is going to be a dedicated left-turn lane north and south, and then obviously crosswalks along each one, each leg of the roadway. The other benefit to adding this, if you look at this schematic on the left, you can see those triangles, the blue and green triangles are the site visibility of a driver heading north and south. Once we put some space in there and put in a two-way left-turn lane, you can actually see that they can see around the other vehicles, which will help reduce the left-turn crashes and the rear-end crashes. And then it will also help with the side-swipe crashes, right? Because you're not trying to swerve to get around someone that's making a left turn into their residence, or into a business, or at a signalized intersection. Here's the intersection of Laos and Robert, and so again, here you'll just see how much better the site visibility is for your turning movement to help reduce accidents at these intersections. And I guess that is my last slide. So if you have any questions, I'm more than happy to answer them for you.
Questions, council?
Will the turning lights have arrows?
We are projecting right now that we do want a permissible left turn, so that means that there will be a protected permissible left turn, so you would have an arrow first, and then it would go to a green or a yellow after that, so then you would have to stop. But we are looking at permissible left turns to move traffic through as quickly as possible.
Okay. So I know we're going to get this question, you may not know the answer yet, but after you slurry, you're going to do a speed study, or do you not need to do a speed study and it'll stay the same?
The speed right now will stay the same. We actually have done a speed study on numerous roadways, and those are all currently being reviewed by the engineering team right now, so we will be bringing those recommendations back to you after the first of the year.
Got it. Thank you. Thank you. So we appreciate you tonight.
Thank you.
And that concludes our study session.